So I'll just, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the good news is, the school is going in the right direction. And when I show some of the statistics tonight and some of the goals and where we're heading with NIESC, I really truly believe that. I think we have certain variables that we can control, and with those ones that we can control, we're doing things to improve instruction, curriculum, and basically the student experience. Sometimes we have situations that we can't control, and those variables, we're trying to make sure that they don't impact our school as much as, you know, as much as we can. So, just on this first page, the demographic data, just two things to point out, and you have this in front of you, so if you have any other questions later on, you can ask or give me a call. The 3.8, last year we stood here and we talked about ELL and maybe adding a fourth ELL teacher. In hindsight, that was a great idea, because that's moved up even this year. I believe the 3.8 is from our October 1st report, and it's up to 4.3 now. And it's growing. And we had some, we had an influx of students come in, in January after our midterms. So, again, looking back at that decision, and I know it's a budget decision, but it was a good decision, so I just wanted to publicly thank you for that. Our dropout rate is another area, 1.9. I've seen it in some of the different stats, it's 1.8, it depends on how they round them up sometimes, but 0.9, 1.8 of the state. That's a lot of work there, too. And in a system as complex as the high school, all the moving parts, just having the support, obviously, of the North Shore Mall and the PBD Learning Academy, our PANS program at night has kept kids in school, our school-based health center with the uptick and what we've seen with mental health issues, just even in the past few years, trying to keep kids in school, credit recovery, all things that I know in a tough budget year, these are things that you look at and say, "How's it working?" Well, I think there's proof right there with the dropout rate. And, again, that's hard work with our teachers, our counselors, our administration, working with kids, making sure that kids feel safe in school, and trying to find some options for them, whether they have, excuse me, anxiety issues, something where a PLA is so helpful to some of our kids. And we're, I know that Mr. Padat is graduating, I believe, 16 kids this year, so there's 16 kids that we may have lost along the way. So, great job by him. Sorry. The next slide is just kind of a summary here of our MCAS scores, and there is good news there. Last year, we looked at our advanced, we went from 26% advanced to 35% in ELA, that's a 9% obviously increase in our advanced area. The other area is if you look at right in here, where the advanced and proficient always together is 93%, the state is 91%. So, again, we're still achieving, it's this area, oops, excuse me. It's this area here that we're looking at, too, is that 5%, that 8%, and that 7%. How do we reach these kids? And what are the variables that keep these kids maybe in that percentage? Is it attendance? Is it things at home? Is it mental health? Is it not connecting with a teacher or with the right kind of classes for them? Should they be in, you know, a advanced class or a CTE program, or whatever it may be? So, we're really kind of picking that apart, and one way we're doing that is, we have a book study going on in poverty with our teachers, they're reading about that, and just trying to get a better understanding that when kids are walking into their classroom, that they're all, if it's 25 kids in a class, they're all walking in from a different background, a different social, socioeconomic situation, and to try to be compassionate and understand that, you know, math homework's important, but maybe they didn't have the right, you know, food last night, or there was a big blowout at home. So, that's what we're trying to look at and trying to pull those kids along. And we have some kids that are working extremely hard and teachers that are working extremely hard. Another good news is our math and our performance level there. We went from 41% to 49% in advanced math. So, in our graduating class of 2019, we're looking at not only an 8% increase, but almost 50% of our kids are at the advanced level in math in the class of 2019, which is great. Again, and if you look at down here, where the school is, the student growth percentile is 53, if I can see that, the state is 50. So, we're ahead of the state as far as the growth there goes. Still, we're looking at that 20, 25%, there's 19% in needs improvement and 6% failure, which has been, the 6% failure's been unfortunately too consistent. We need to push those people along, we need to push that 19 into that 26, into that proficient area. So, again, identifying that 25%. And with math teachers and math people, they love this stuff. So, giving them access to MCAS, to some of these different data areas, they're looking at and pulling that apart and saying, "Here's some common ground." Now, sometimes we find that, sometimes we think we find it, try things differently, and, you know, they may have switched the questions on the test a little bit more than we thought they did. The bottom line is that people are working together, our math department and their department meetings love going over this kind of stuff. And I'll show you in the next slide that they were very excited about, so I said I would put this in for them, is our math MCAS scores for the class of 2019. So, if you look at this, it's kind of the reverse color-wise, sorry, but when you looked at the other chart, those are kids that are in our school. So, whether they've been in there since first grade or came two weeks before MCAS exam, we're responsible for them. This chart here shows you kids that from the third grade, that took the MCAS in third grade in 2010, right up into 2017. This is, this is the area, that blue area, where you can see the advancement and how quick and where they're at right now. So, there's a huge, huge movement there. You can see that, I think, from even kids going in a year, in three quarters or so, from the eighth grade to the 10th grade, you're seeing a jump of almost double from, it goes to 77% advanced and proficient, which is pretty amazing. As far as the advance goes, it goes from 27 to 54%, doubling there, too. So, again, if you're in the PBD public schools, you're in good shape. You can see that progression and stuff. And again, I'm not trying to compare, obviously, a third grade, sixth grade MCAS score to the high school assessment, but you can see that we're not going the other way, and that's what's important. So, we're very happy with that, that 8% increase in our advanced, but still, again, looking for that, that bottom half to move them up, or bottom quarter, I should say. The next slide is in science, and probably like the middle school, too. There's not a lot of data here because of the changes with the state test, the standards have changed, so there's been a little dip, and it also coincided with the school, our district, adopting a new science program, K through 12. So, it's going to take a little time to get that moving, but again, it's not, it's not, you know, horrific or anything. It's actually probably good timing with the state changes in our new curriculum. That teachers are excited, they're very motivated to look at those new standards and to redesign what they're teaching in class, which is also, again, good for our NIESC situation. So, moving along, what's, looking at the data and what's next for the high school? NIESC is our focus this year, it's our focus next year, and it's going to be our focus in the fall of 2019. Not that it isn't the focus all the time, but NIESC has kind of changed also. And I think what we, we met with Bill Worley, who's our liaison with NIESC, he was very happy with the work that's going on, he's very happy, he says, "You know, you're kind of ahead of the game, and we want to stay ahead," because I think it takes the pressure off of the feeling of just getting this thing done, getting it passed in and getting it over with, without looking at really true changes that could take place. So, I think this is a good thing, I think it's great that they're coming in in 2019, the fall. In 2020, the standards are going to change even again, but we talked about that with them, and some of the things that we're doing actually address the standards in 2022. Bottom line, there's seven standards in the 2019 visit, there'll be five standards in the 2020 NIESC. What am I trying to say? The next wave of standards, thank you. So, the bottom line is, what's the 21st century graduate look like coming out of PBD High? And that's what the discussion in our learning communities are right now, what we're looking at at some of the faculty meetings and discussion. We're looking at, you know, our mission statement, what we're doing with that, and where we're going with that. And we're going to be doing, hopefully taking a vote at the end of the year, and when that does happen, I will obviously report back out to you about what we're doing. It's a little bit different, again, the changes in NIESC, it's not so much the big, long paragraph, all wordy, you know, explanation, it's short, compact, to-the-point type of mission statement. So, we've had a lot of good discussion on that, and again, the technology in the school allows us to do a lot of this stuff, meeting in different groups around the school, but then putting it on a Google Doc, and everyone's just kind of sharing things in and pulling the information together. What we also look at doing, too, is with our middle school, one of the things we've looked at and discussed is the transition from eighth to ninth grade, and what can we do to make that a little bit of an easier transition for some kids? Some kids transition very easily, others struggle with it. So, what we have done, and I apologize, I probably should have made some notes from what we're looking at, we're going to try to pilot a semester class this year with all these different pieces of everything from where and what is available at the high school, what the different programs are, to our media center library and what kind of resources are there, what kind of clubs we have, whatever it may be, of all the different opportunities that they have as far as making connections with adults, possible community service, time that they could do, or internships along the way, it's really going to be kind of like a very structured study skills type of class, and to make sure that every kid we know has certain standards. So, it could be a day or a couple days on making sure that they can write good, solid opening sentences for a paragraph or whatever, just to make sure that we haven't missed anybody, or that, that other group there that maybe needs improvement hasn't fallen through the cracks, so that we know that we can make sure that we're not finding that out after the exam. Also, that's been successful this year, and we want to continue, some of the co-teaching motto. We had a very successful math one last year that we saw in the MCAS scores this year. What happened was, we took, identified about 20 kids that really were on pace, needs improvement, failing, and we got 18 of those kids to pass MCAS. And I think the 19th, one of the kids didn't even finish the exam, so they're taking the makeup. So, an incredible job by the two teachers that were working on that, we've had other teachers look at that. And then this year, we had a kind of a situation where a larger, maybe ELL class and some other math students all mixed in. What we did was, we broke that out and we had a co-teach, so we have an ELL teacher really working with the vocabulary of math with the students, and the math teacher going, it is amazing to see. In fact, I know that Mrs. Manietas went up one time to go take a look at that class and observe for five minutes, and she was gone for about 40 minutes, and I said, "Where have you been?" She goes, "You gotta go see this, this is amazing." So, kids that sometimes are struggling or are not understanding and stuff, it was, there was a lot of enthusiasm, there was a lot of action going on in the class. When I went, I, not only the kids, but from the teachers, too. So, great job by them. We'd also like to incorporate this into some of our special ed classes. We did dabble a little bit with biology this year, too, where we had a teacher going out on maternity leave, and we had the option of bringing the teacher that was going to take that class, so for a semester, they kind of taught together, too. So, we're doing things differently, we're trying to do things that are going to improve the instruction and practices of our school. So, again, we saw that with our math in our MCAS scores this year, and we're excited about what we're going to be doing, too. Again, this is the PBD School Systems Mission and Vision Statement, and again, we're using that to build our other one. As far as our goals for the school and talking with teachers and parents and our students, we've, and these are really in no particular order, just so you know, but this is kind of geared off of some of the NIESC verbiage, so we've changed it around a little bit, so to revise and implement a guaranteed and viable 21st century curriculum. So, I know we're kind of short on time, and you have a copy in front of you, instead of reading through everything, bottom line is, we're looking to make sure that our curriculum, we're looking at the frameworks, we're getting these things updated, some need more updating than others, and then hopefully, in the bottom there where it says, "Implementation of the curriculum by 2019-20," that's okay, that's going to take a while, even NIESC has said, "You probably won't be done by the time we're in," but, you know, we'll be probably into our electives at that point. And that's, like they said, it's a little different now with NIESC, they say, "That's okay, you're progressing, this is what you're doing." So, you know, if you look at some curriculum that hasn't been worked on in a while, we've even changed some of the books and some of the way we teach things and use of technology. So, we're trying to incorporate that more into, you know, our framework, our curriculum, and making sure that it's being aligned with the new frameworks. It also says here, the Director of Teacher in Learning, Jared Haas, he's been very helpful in working with our PLCs in time when teachers, we don't have a lot of collaborative time, but the time that we do have, we try to make sure that the teachers are using it efficiently, and Jared's been going in, not only talking about NIESC, but talking about this also. Just want to catch up. Our second goal, to analyze, and this probably could have been our first goal if you really wanted to put them in order, to analyze our instructional practices. And again, develop and implement high-quality instructional practices. So, how are we doing that? We're meeting our instructional rounds team, which is a group of teachers. I saw it in action today, not so much with our teachers, but we had our CTE, the DSAC, the CTE vocational, there was a group in that were meeting today with some of our teachers, but teachers from other schools, and what they do is, they go in, they went into our medical assisting when I saw them, and they go around and they're listening to kids and how they're learning, and taking notes on, you know, specific things that they're looking for. In fact, I saw even one of the teachers go over in the corner, take a picture of the lockers, and it's little things like that that they take back to their school, and she says, "I'm just taking a picture of the lockers, because this is exactly what we need to organize our space a little bit better." So, it's little, simple things in trying to take those best practices out of, out of the classroom. So, this is something that we've, we've been working with DSAC, our instructional rounds team, we haven't got as much reporting back this year as we'd like, because there's been a lot of NIESCs, but I think next year, we're going to do a lot more of this instructional rounds and try to make it more of a routine and stuff. And again, it first started as, I'm a little nervous about this, some people coming into my classroom, I think now people are inviting people in to kind of see what these best practices are. So, we're trying to focus basically, not only on the positive, but again, trying to see where we need some help. Then the third goal, to build a data-driven system that accesses and supports all learners. Again, this gets into that, whether it's our high-end kid in math that's advanced, or the kid that's struggling, trying to pass, or trying to get into that proficient area, we're trying to develop and look at our common assessments, not just the midterms, not just the finals, but other areas to make sure that there are benchmarks for our kids, that they meet the minimum before we move on, so that we have some idea, again, of what kids are learning, what they should know, and really what the basics are, and then go from there. So, again, we're working and discussing this at faculty meetings and on PD Day. So, we're trying to squeeze a lot of things in, and this hopefully will lead to making some data-driven scheduling decisions, like with our CTE electives, things like that. Our CTE looks at the programming and how much time they need to get certain licensure, licenses for the kids. I know we have one teacher that's looking into, he's gotten OSHA certified, he wants to bring that to, back to his kids in the shop, which is great. Also, our electives, how are we using the technology in our electives to kind of update those electives, too? So, there's a lot of interesting things going on. It's never a boring day at the high school, and if you've been up there, and I know some of you popped in, obviously, for Career Day, and some of you that I talked with even during Career Day or after Career Day, you saw some of this in action. The fourth goal, again, to establish a tiered intervention support system to meet the academic and social emotional needs of all learners. Again, this is that ninth grade class, to make sure that there was some kind of academic support class in place, so that all ninth graders, a semester of their first year, we're trying to pilot this, and hopefully this will make sure that we don't, no one slips through the cracks or gets behind uncertain things, and then we find out sophomore year, well, jeez, this one didn't pass, you know, English, and it was close in math, just trying to cut, cut that, cut that gap off, and this is one way of doing it. We're also going to explore maybe a Saturday school to look into, because again, with the state and suspensions, one thing that we've done different this year is if we have a suspension in the handbook that says, "Calls for five days," we're trying not to be as punitive with the five days. We've, we're saying, "Well, maybe two days," because if we, the kids are five days, what are they going to be doing? Are they really going to be doing the work? Now, they probably have more access to the work than they've ever had through the Google Classroom and their Chromebooks, but we don't want them out of school as long. So, we've been trying to work with kids, and I'll be honest, a lot of our high school kids, as soon as they do something or get themselves in a bind, they're pretty honest and upfront that something else is going on in their life, or they just fess up and they're like, "Yeah, I messed up." So, again, we're trying to be a little bit more compassionate on that and try to get more out of it. But the state is also saying that, you know, when you start to add up even in school suspensions, that becomes part of the suspension list. So, Saturday school might be an option that you can make up some time or do something there, whether it's attendance, tardies, whatever it may be, just getting caught up on work, some kind of different option for kids. Again, that'll involve some training and some other things, but it's something, obviously, to look at. But the big thing here is trying to really support our students and their social emotional needs. So, again, what, just to recap, what are we doing to get out of Level 3? Well, one thing that's happening is that the state is going to reconfigure everything anyways. So, Level 1 through 5 is no longer going to be used. That's good news. You know, I'm hoping that with next year's MCAS, and I'll explain, we did a little differently this time with the English, and we're going to do with math and science, but hopefully we won't be in that situation. But I think right now, if you look at it, there's a huge range of schools in that Level 3, and, you know, we're, we're right there, and we're really trying to get into that Level 2 area, we're closer to the 2 than we are to a 4 or a 5, which is, is good. But again, that is all going to be reassessed by the state, and there's going to be new accountability and a new look to that, that system. So, what we've been doing is, we've been meeting with DSAC, they've been a tremendous help, whether it's the leadership group, math, inclusive schools, and I did, I apologize, I left off the CTE group that was actually in our school today. And that just is, again, a bunch of schools with leaders from the state, talking about different issues, schools run into, how they've solved them, how the, you know, different ideas of what they're doing within their districts. And a lot of times, we're sitting with districts that are very similar to us. Some things we do very well, and sometimes we take some pretty good ideas out of those. Again, we try to balance this, taking people out of the classroom, because it's good to send people to these different workshops, but the problem becomes, I don't want to pull a math, the same math teacher four times, five times out of a class, for five classes, and then we have five snow days, too. So, it's trying to find that balance, but we have some teachers that have been very interested in going to those and have really brought back some, some great ideas. Again, the co-teaching is really working out, and we hope to expand that with the special education and possibly English, too, when we're looking at scheduling. I'm going to skip the third one just for a second. Again, organizing our instructional rounds team, which has worked, and our data leadership team, they've gotten a taste of this, now it's, it's time for them to really kind of take hold and really work on this. I think that the, the questions of, "Well, why are we doing this?" has kind of been answered, and now it's about going out and actually doing this in the classrooms and really sharing some of this best practice. Reworking the daily schedule to create an optimal educational testing environment for MCAS. This was a huge undertaking, I think I mentioned it when I was here with the kids last time. In the past, we kind of ran our classes minus the 10th grade, some of the split classes just had class, so if you had 20 kids in a class, you may have only had 12 that day because they were taking MCAS. What we did this year was isolated our MCAS up on the third floor, and it was in the back part of the building, it was completely quiet, they were with, I think 95% of the kids were with familiar proctors that they knew, and those proctors stayed with those kids for the exam. In the past, we've had things going back two, three years, where kids finished and they went to the cafeteria. So, we learned from that. That wasn't such a great idea, because kids sometimes just did enough to pass and off they went. By isolating them, it changed the testing area, it changed the whole mood. The feedback we got from teachers was that this is the best testing that we've ever had, that, you know, the kids were working right up through what we consider fourth period, where other years they had finished up earlier, there weren't the distractions of people going in and out maybe of the room, or the bells going, we even shut the bells down and tried to change kids throughout the building in a different way. What we also did was run workshops for our ninth, 11th, and 12th grade, which was incredibly complex, trying to keep track of kids, where they were going, what they were doing. We had workshops, everything from financial literacy to wellness in the fieldhouse, we had a ninth grade biology review for the biology MCAS coming up, all these different things. It's in Ken McHugh, Jared Haas, Judy Manietas, the whole team did an amazing job putting this together, and it was quite an undertaking. It was for three days, everyone was exhausted after, but I think it provided the best testing for our students that we've ever had. And we're going to do it again for math for the two days, and then again in, in June for the biology. The good news is, we're only going to be dealing with, and the seniors will be gone, so we'll only be dealing with the two classes and trying to coordinate them. We're going to continue to try to, with our math strategies, try to have a class of ninth, 10th slash, and then 11th slash 12th grade class. That, again, is just identifying those groups of kids that are struggling or may not have passed MCAS yet. And then our bi-monthly teacher leadership team meetings, we've been meeting with Julie McGrath, that's gone really well. We've done everything from going out in kind of an open area and meeting people off-campus just to talk about other things besides school, to really talking about where teachers can step up, where people can, there are leadership opportunities, and bring information back to our, other members of our staff to make sure that the right message is being heard. This has been also very helpful with our organization of our NIESC steering committee and our different, seven committees that people are also co-chairing, too. We're going to, last year, we offered that Algebra I Honest class, and we're going to, again, continue to do that, and hopefully with a geometry class, too. This was just for those kids that are used to getting that A, A-, in maybe math in eighth grade, but then slipped to a B, B-, sometimes just that extra year of algebra. I know the teacher that taught the one section of that that we tried said it was amazing and how, basically finished the book that year. So, just strengthen their math skills, and we're obviously excited about that. We addressed all the recommendations for the coordinated program review with our CTE programs, and continue to do that and improve those programs, which, again, can help improve some of our kids, keeping them in school, improving their, their scores. And again, I already mentioned things about reducing the number of suspensions in some of our intervention programs with the Student Health Center. Budget considerations, these are here, just as a list, just on a couple of them, our projectors and cameras, you know, everything has to be updated, and this is the way things go. I don't mean updated our school, but this is just the way technology works, it's not like a book that's been here for 20, 30 years. One of the things with the projectors and cameras is our SMARTboards, and math all have SMARTboards, they're getting near the end of their shelf life, you know, we've had a couple kind of die out, so we're looking, I've been working with Chris Mitchell and Brian Condon up at the high school to look at replacements for that. We just put in a short throw downstairs, and we're seeing how that's going to work out, and maybe we can replace that in math. Obviously, the perimeter lighting, and, you know, again, with Alice and with school security, looking at those four locations, I know I've been talking with Mr. Healy and about maybe getting a buzz-in system for, for teachers, too, so the doors, the doors are always locked anyway, so we're going to go from all the doors locked to maybe people having certain times that they can get into the building, whether it's coaches, whether it's teachers, whatever it may be, and that, again, makes it that much more secure. But we've made huge strides in that, and our security team has done a great job with that. And there's some other different things money-wise that, it's been up there for a few years. Our math books, Algebra I and Geometry is a big consideration for this year, too, to kind of keep the momentum moving forward, and I know the Assistant Superintendent and the Department Head at the high school, Gina Poserero, has done a great job looking, and, and the math department, looking at different books and looking at different programs. And we've also met with the middle school, I was able to come down and meet with the middle school, some of the math teachers, and discuss some of those different programs, so, and some of their concerns, which was a great meeting. Again, thanks to the mayor, the superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent, soon-to-be superintendent, and all of you, because I know that you're faced in looking at budget decisions, and they're tough, tough decisions, and I know sometimes you don't always, you know, get the old pat on the back for some of the decisions that you make, but I can say that the decisions that have been made by this committee for the high school have been very beneficial, and it's, it's worked out very well. And again, my administrative team, my parents, although at the high school, you know, parents tend to start to branch away a little bit, but there are parents I know that, you know, have said to have said to me, "If you need something, just give me a call," and that's always appreciated. Our students are great. I just, we just had a thing at the high school, and I was walking somebody out of the building, not in a bad way, a good way, and I said, you know, they said, "This building's great." I go, "I know, it was built in 1972 and the floors are shining." And I said, "And this is before the custodians even hit this place." So, we're very proud of the way our students treat our building, and, again, I think that's because we set expectations, and our teachers have expectations also. So, I don't know if you have any questions. I tried to go as fast as I can. I didn't look at my notes and go over probably half the things I had written down. I hope I made sense.
(laughter) You know I'm gonna ask a question. Actually, it's a bit of a compliment. Back on page 5, I really appreciated that data that you gave us, so that we could see how those students improved. It was the one where you followed them from grade 3 on up to grade 10. That was really, really interesting.
Kind of interesting.
Interesting, it really was. Thank you for doing that, and thank you for giving us all this information. It really is a lot going on up at the school between MCAS and NIESC and every other initial going. You've got a lot.
It's a lot. There's never a boring day. Some days we want them, with just one boring day. And I know that, you know, we're frustrated with the Level 3 stuff, too, because, you know, I stand up here every year, and we wanna get out of that, and maybe with the new state, the reconfiguration and stuff, there will be some things there. I'm really excited about the way MCAS went this year with our students and the feedback from the teachers. So, again, I think there's another change there that will see results, hopefully, when the scores are released in the fall of 2018. But, yeah, this was kind of some, someone had pulled this, again, it was one of the math geeks looking around things, they're great, and they said, "Hey, you gotta use this." I said, "Okay, I will." So, but it's really, I think, again, too, when you're talking advanced math, you know, I don't know about you, but I kinda quit with my kids after 7th grade. I was like, "I don't know all this new stuff, and I'm just being honest." So, for them to be advanced in math and look at some of the scores, and then take, put on top of that RAP programs and some of the people that teach our programs. We have a math teacher that's, you know, in his summertime teaches at MIT, so, and loves being there, and loves the kids there, so, and the kids love him. So, you know, these are the things that are the positives and the things that you probably don't hear about as much, but are there, and those are the things that are important.
Well, actually, you did generate another question for me. It was interesting to hear how you changed the setting for the MCAS and the way that you administered it and the way the whole school shifted.
Yes.
We heard evidence when we were talking about changing the start times, and one of the things was, they did a study at Annapolis, at the Naval Academy, and they split the plebes in half, and they gave half of them their exams at, I don't know, first thing in the morning, and then the others went two hours later, and it showed an improvement. And we talked about maybe being able to shift your MCAs a little later. Were you able to do that this time?
No, we can't shift it, well, we could do anything, I shouldn't say we can't. By shifting it later, then you get into the lunches in the school, and then that becomes some issues as far as the food's cooked. And I think that was one of those areas that we kinda stay away from because of that. However, you know, like you're saying... By looking into that and making those changes, you know, there's, a lot of schools do a early, or a, what's it called, they come in later. And, yeah, and we discussed that even, too, with the superintendent, and he had strong feelings on that, and he's writing right now. But, he was right, and we went about this, and we said two things to the faculty. This could be great, it's gonna be a lot of work, or this could be a complete disaster. And it wasn't, and it was, it was a lot of organizing and a lot, you know, we don't think we've lost any kids, we're still, you know, looking for a few, but it was, it was a lot of moving parts. And, in fact, just even thinking about it coming up again in the end of May with math, you know, we only have two days, we have one last class, it's making it at least manageable. I think if we had to redo it again for three days and three classes, I may lose a few people to the hospital themselves. But it was, it was, it was a good thing, too, and kids, the feedback from some of the kids, it was really interesting. They liked it, they liked the change of pace.
Actually, they did. Some kids that I know were mentioning how interesting it was, not just the ones who took the MCAs, they just, you know, it was a test, they took the test, but the other kids, the other grades, were really enthused about just having, you know, a really interesting class, those seminars that you offered were, you know, a quick one thing, but they really enjoyed it, and it was a nice, it was a nice thing to do.
And it was teacher-driven.
Yeah.
And then the next step was, you know, "If we do this again, here's some suggestions, and we're gonna use some of their suggestions for the next one."
Perfect. Good, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
(applause) Now, we have the final school. This is the last SIT presentation, I know you said... Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome, thank you.
(inaudible) 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 Final one, I was told I get extra time.
(laughing) We're in your house, sorry.
That's true. All right, to start off with our demographic data, a couple of the points that I want to emphasize from our demographic data, this is from October, and you can see the percentage of students' first language not English and limited English proficient has risen pretty significantly from last year's data. The number in parentheses is last year's data, so we've gone from 8.7 to 12.2 of kids that are, their first language at home is not English. That has increased over the course of this year, too, as we've had new students coming in throughout the year, many of whom are not students whose first language is English. So, that number continues to rise. One of the things I'm always a little surprised by is, it's still not near the state percentage. But we are, again, growing in that population every year. The other, our economically disadvantaged and special ed populations have remained relatively similar over the years. So as I'm sure you've heard through the elementary presentations, is that the next-generation MCAS, which we took last year in all subject areas except for science, is completely new, or was completely new last year, and the DESE stressed that it, none of the data can be compared to previous years. 2017 was intended to be a baseline, so you really couldn't look at, there really wasn't anything that you could look at to compare 2017 to any of the years prior, with the exception of the growth score, which we'll talk a little bit about throughout this presentation. New achievement levels, and you can see they're in that second-to-last column, they've changed from advanced proficient, needs improvement, and warning to exceeding expectations, meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting, but they, the state wanted to make sure to emphasize that the numbers of proficient and advanced that you would've seen in past years is not going to in any way correlate to the numbers that you see for exceeding expectations and meeting expectations. Some of them, for example, grade 8, will be far lower in 2017 than they ever were before, 'cause there's no, there's no real correlation between the two, as they've changed the testing, the scoring, everything about it. One thing that is new this year is that scaled score. You see in the upper right-hand corner is an average scaled score that they do for each grade level and test, which is, again, something that they've not done before, and it allows us a little point of comparison, because we can compare that to the state, and we can compare that to neighboring cities and towns. So for our grade 6 ELA, and overall, I would say our grade 6 students, as much as we can tell by the data, performed probably the best of the three grade levels. That 502, the state average scaled score in pretty much every grade level, every subject area, was 498, so you can use that number in your head to think about comparisons between how we performed last year and the state. Some surrounding numbers for this grade 6 ELA, Danvers was at a 495, Salem was at a 496, and I took a look at North Andover to see a typically higher-performing school, and they were at 504. So, at least in this test, if we wanted to try to figure out how we did in terms of some other towns and in comparison to something, we were able to use that data. If we switch over to math, again, keeping in mind that that average scaled score was a 498, we were right in line with the state average. Again, even with the state average, they wanted to stress that the data from 2017 is really baseline, they can't even compare the state to previous years with the state. But, some numbers that are, will eventually, over the years, mean a little bit more to In grade 6 math, just for another point of comparison, the exceeding expectations and meeting expectations combo was 49 for the state, 7 exceeding and 42 meeting, so we had 5 exceeding and 42 meeting. And the not-meeting expectation state average is 11. So we're, again, not being able to put a whole lot of faith in the data itself, but those comparison points give us a little bit to base it on. Grade 7 ELA, again, that average scaled score, 498. I feel like I should be saying more about the numbers, but there really isn't a lot to say, because we know what it means, but we need to take a look at it, and next year we'll have some more to compare it to. And grade 7 math, 493, slightly lower than the state average, which is, again, 498. For point of, I mean, a point of comparison for, Danvers was 492 for their scaled score, Salem also 492, North Andover's 510. Grade 8, where they warned us that those numbers would be significantly different than numbers we're used to seeing, I think is pretty accurate, with that average scaled Exceeding expectations and meeting expectations for the state was 49% as compared to our 46. We're a little, we're a little lower in exceeding expectations and a notch higher in meeting Grade 8 math, scaled score 498. This is where it really, if you were looking at numbers that were comparable, you'd see the 24 advanced from last year, meeting 4 exceeding expectations for 2017, but the state average was only around a 9, so it's not as drastic as that seems to be a shift. It's, again, a totally different scoring system, and they had mentioned that grade 8 was affected the most by that scoring system. Science was the same, last year was the same old paper-based test, so there are numbers to compare, and I, the numbers to compare are the same as they've been in years past, I think probably going all the way back to when science MCAS started. The light at the end of the tunnel for us, and we'll see it in a few other slides, is that we're currently in, or we'll be going into, year 3 of our new science curriculum, our spiraling science curriculum, in which everything is, instead of being separate subjects taught at separate grade levels, the topics are taught throughout, in 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, built upon each other throughout the three grades, which will help in not only the standardized testing, but will help students as they progress beyond middle school, and don't have to revert back to something they learned in the 6th grade when they jump into biology class in high school. It'll build upon their learning as they go through, and this is, 2018, 19 will be year 3 of that. So, all of our kids, at the end of next year, will have gone through that spiraling curriculum, and will be able to, the year after, pick up like we're starting brand-new. So, some of the areas of strength, because we can still use growth numbers, because that hasn't changed, the way they score, is, and just to mention what growth is, the student growth percentile, it takes a kid's score, and it measures it against students in the state at that grade level with similar scores in prior years. So a kid that gets a 248, in prior years had gotten a 248, they take a look at all of the kids across the state that got that same score, and it looks at how they then performed in the test and compares them to each other. So they're comparing kids against their cohorts that scored similarly before. Anything between 40 to 60 is considered moderate growth, from 60 to 80 is considered high growth, and anything 80-plus is very high growth. The good news is that the growth scores are gonna be used to determine accountability in the next-generation accountability system. They're changing that, as Eric mentioned in his presentation, they're changing pretty much everything about it. But one of the things they are using, starting next year, are growth scores, going back, I think, five years. So it'll, they'll take the average math SGP and the average ELA SGP, and our overall math SGP, as you can see on there, is a 57, which is close to being considered high growth. Our 8th grade math, if you think back to the slide that you saw, the achievement levels, and the achievement levels did not look to be that impressive, the math SGP was a 62, so it was in that high-growth range, and you can see that little bullet on the bottom, we had 398 students that took that test, 207 of them scored either high or very high growth. So it means in terms of their comparison to other students of similar performance in past years, they did very well. In fact, we had more kids in the very-high-growth percentile than we did in the high-growth percentile last year. So more than half of our kids in grade 8 math showed that growth at a very high, higher, very high rate. Some areas we need to grow in, generally speaking, we are, we still have that group of kids that we need to get from, which would now be partially meeting expectations, up to meeting or exceeding. So in the old days, it would've been those kids that are in that needs improvement and getting them to proficient or up to advanced. It's that same little bucket of kids that we need to move, we need to move a level. Our warning, or what now will be not-meeting expectations, is always lower than the state. It's that next bucket up, that next group of kids, that we need to continue to push in the, in a new direction. Another good piece of the accountability system that's coming up, is that they are going to identify your 25 most-at-risk kids every year, as part of another little piece of your accountability status, and we'll be able to focus on those kids that we will need to move that needle a little bit. Always looking to move those ELA kids into exceeding expectations. Our ELA SGP was a little bit low, certainly lower than we've seen in the past, and especially compared to the overall ELA SGP of 52. One of the things that we wanna make sure is that, taking math, taking a math test, any kind of math test, but certainly a standardized math test, on a Chromebook is a lot different than taking it with pencil and paper. I mean, they're still allowed to use the pencil and paper to do their computations, but getting that from the paper onto the Chromebook, it's just, it's a whole different, it's kind of, for, especially for old people that have been around a while, it seems like an unnatural thing to do math on a computer without being able to write it or fill in a little bubble. So we wanna make sure that we make kids as familiar... So we want to make sure that we make kids as familiar as possible with the Test, Test NAV, which is the name of the testing program, to make sure that throughout the year they're using it, they're familiar with it, because we, we feel that there was probably some, some of the, some of the test results that we got last year because of the first time we ever did any sort of computer-based testing, which is why we opted in this district to go with that pilot last year, so that we could give kids a chance to participate in testing with that computer-based platform. As I mentioned, science, we are coming up on year three of our realignment, and some of the questions that we have going forward is, as kids become more familiar with testing on a Chromebook, will that increase our achievement scores? And how will we be affected by the next generation? Some of those pieces that we look forward to being in that accountability system, perhaps will be to our advantage, but we'll, we'll find out next year. Looking ahead to our school improvement goals for 2018-19, we have four kind of overarching goals. The first one is our teaching in, well, it's more of the teaching than the teaching and learning goals, the teaching and assessment goal, I would call it, which would be for assisting our teachers in strengthening and sharing good instructional practices. And some of the bullets that I want to highlight, especially going into next year, we're going to put a focus on, on blended learning for, for next year. The last two pages of the, of your packet are sort of a little overview of blended learning and how it's going to be utilized at Higgins Middle School next year. It's for 2018-19 handout. It's something that we haven't, still finalizing it and we'll be putting it out next year. But blended learning basically is a personalized and student-centered way of learning. It's a mix of face-to-face and online, all in the same classroom with the same teacher, with the same kids. It includes a variety of assessments and some choice of assessments that kids can, can choose between, and it gives teachers more information, more data at the time that they need it. We have piloted it this year with one cluster, who, the sixth-grade Sharks Cluster, and they've been keeping detailed notes about it, they've been keeping journals and logs and they've had a great time with it, kids have responded well to it, teachers have loved it more than they expected to, I think. They did a presentation to our faculty a couple of months ago, and we were expecting the Sharks to do it this year and then next year gradually roll it out to other clusters, but there were teachers that jumped right on it as soon as the Sharks gave their presentation and have started to use it this year. And it's something that, it really makes us a true one-to-one, because instead of just utilizing the, the technology as sort of an add-on, the technology piece will be utilized as something that changes instruction within the classroom. So that's our focus next year, is that blended learning initiative. And I may, expanding the pilot program may be a bit of an understatement, it may be something that is even wider, more widely used than that. Helping us with that is that, helping us with that is we have the daily collaborative time and the built-in PD time within our schedule. So being, having teachers have that time to meet with their cluster colleagues, two days out of five, I'm sorry, their cluster colleagues every day, their department colleagues one day out of five, in a, in a built-in PD time with our digital learning coach, who's been fantastic when it comes to the blended learning and all other aspects of, of her role. That's one day out of five, too, that's built right into our schedule. Another little piece is our pineapple charts that we've done this year. We're rolling out slowly and it's been something that the teachers have had some fun with. It's very informal. Teachers, when they have a lesson that they want to open their classroom and have, and have other teachers come in and take a look at it, they put a little pineapple on their window or their door, and that is the hospitality, the international sign of hospitality. It lets teachers know that their room is open and people can come in and take a look and see what they're doing. We have an online form that allows teachers to then look and see what it is that a teacher is offering before they go in. It could be something, a topic, it could be a teaching style, it could be anything. Teachers can drop in for a few minutes and, and check it out. We did an open house on one of our, on one of our days this year before professional development, where we, instead of our collaborative PD time, I'm sorry, our collaborative department time, we had teachers use that time to go and visit other classrooms, and they went in pairs, they went in, in groups and visited other classrooms and got a chance to see so, how other, in this case, grade levels, sometimes the same topic, sometimes not, subject, and sometimes not, and they really had an opportunity to see other teachers, which you don't often have in this profession, it's sometimes a job where you're in your classroom and don't really get to see others. So we're going to continue with that next year as well. Goal two is that student-centered, so this is a more of the learning goal, and that's to give our students the skills and strategies they need to become 21st-century learners, problem-solving, innovation, adaptability. We will, we're still full one-to-one, with that blended learning will be more of a full and true one-to-one. We use the Google Apps for Education in all that we do here, and kids are very familiar with it, it's something that is just, it's just part of the, the, the whole routine here. If you jump down a couple of bullet points, we've got, we participate in the Hour of Code, we have a coding club, we have a robotics club, you can see the maker space all around you in this room that Mrs. Smaller is very, very involved in and makes sure that she gets as many kids as possible through here. We've used MyPath, which is a function of edgenuity, to work with our students who are in need of some remediation. It's a, it's a program that'll, that it takes, and kids do, take a test, and it gives them a baseline for grade level for ELA and math, and it creates a path for them, hence the name MyPath, and they're able to follow along at their own pace to get to where they need to go. And it works for grade levels in terms of students' ability-wise, from grade three to 11. So right now, we use it more remediation, but we could also in the future use it as more of an enrichment piece, because our seventh graders who, for example, who are performing at a little higher level can use that to do some higher-level math or, or ELA. Our START program, which is our Student Technology Assistance Resource Team, has taken off. It was created by Jared Haas a few years ago, and Emily Moore, who's our digital learning coach now, it has taken off. They presented at MasQ, the Mas Computer Using Educators Conference, down in Foxborough. They've had a few schools who, after seeing the program, came to visit us here and see it in action, and that is continuing to provide a lot of students some, some great strategies in preparing some 21st-century learning, including, also including digital media. And we continue with our math and ELA labs and seminars. Goal three is our overall, how do things work in the building, our policies, our procedures, making sure that they reflect our needs, because that's ongoing. It's, it, you always need to take a look at what you're doing and evaluate whether or not it's something that needs, can be approved upon, improved upon, rather. We're always looking at our schedule, we love our schedule in terms of the fact that it produces those collaborative times, which are so important to teaching and good instructional practices. But we also want to make sure that it reflects needs of our kids and is equitable, so we're looking at that and making sure that it is equitable, equitable across the board in terms of teacher loads, too. We are in the midst of, or just about wrapping up, we had a homework task force this year, which was comprised of teachers, administrators, students, and parent. And the job was to look at our homework practices in this school and see whether or not they're meaningful and meet that homeschool balance. So we sent out surveys to all stakeholders, parents, students, teachers. We had some focus groups this year of students to talk about some aspects of, of things that came up during the surveys, and we are in the process of coming up with some recommendations in terms of best practices for homework that we will then implement for next year. We are also planning to conduct surveys next year that take a look at various parts of our, of our school and how it operates. We opted not to do that this year because we did the homework surveys and we didn't want to over-survey people, but we are going to do that next year. We're always looking at the traffic, the safety, the security plans here, and making sure that they're up to date and they are, they best reflect our campus. We are meeting in a couple of weeks to realign some of our cameras inside with the security team to make sure that, after living here for almost two years now, there are some spots that we might, we want to tinker with to make sure that we get full coverage with our camera system. So those, those are the types of things that we're continuously doing. And moving over to goal four, which is our emotional environment goal, to make sure that our kids here have a healthy emotional environment of safety, support, and engagement. One of the things to, a few of the things to highlight on there, and there are a few things that are not on there, that we've entered into a, a little bit of a pilot program with, the Career Center, the North Shore Career Center, who is working, who are working with about 25 of our kids who are high-risk, we identified them more for attendance purposes. So we have, they have a little pilot program where they come in and work with them in the morning about the importance of being on time, being at work, what it's going to mean to you if you don't show up to where you're supposed to show up on time. That's been something that has been helpful over the past few months. Our focus on community service and in various aspects of what we do here, I added, this, this is a late addition on the bottom, Representative Moulton actually just tweeted that out, I think, yesterday, in quoting a tweet about our Project 351 clothing drive, you saw Mark and Emma here a couple of weeks ago. Once again, they, they, you know, outpaced everybody in the state with over 1,000, 1,200 and something, 55-gallon bags of donations to Cradle to Crayon. So something we're very proud of here is our community service. Budget considerations for 2019, the fact that we are still a brand-new school means that most of our budget considerations are, are personnel and don't really have anything to do with the physical plant or any sort of technology. And if you look at our enrollment projected for 2018-19, we are at the point where four cluster grade level is not going to cut it anymore class-size-wise. So we will need, if you see the incoming grade six classes, 478. The class we're losing is about 440, which has allowed us to have four clusters in grade eight. And now is the, the time, for the last few years, we've been able to maneuver some positions around in, in order to keep that four clusters, but at this point, we will be in need of that fifth cluster next year. I think, oh, my thank-you slide. So thank, there's our school council members on there, and thank you, as always, for your support of everything we do here. We're very proud of it, and we couldn't do it without, without your support and help. So thank you.
So yeah, I noticed that you put Miss Bertig on the same line as I.
I hope Jerry doesn't notice I left him off.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Well, first, thank you, this was really very informative, and it's, it's got to be hard to give these presentations, even with Mr. Buckley as well, because you're trying to give us the MCAS information and it's, you know, it's a new, new norm, and that, that I'm sure is very hard to, to, to work with. But one of the things that I did have a question on is, sorry, I need to know here. Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. When you do your schedule, you're, how do you get the collaborative time in there? Is it by, like, department or subject or, that, that's really good that you're able to do it.
Yeah, so we have, the, the content area teachers have two blocks a day that are not teaching blocks. So they have one, which is their contractually-required prep period, and then the other one is the collaborative time. We have run on a five-day rotating cycle, so of the five days, three of those days are cluster days, so that either a parent meeting or an IEP meeting or just meeting as a cluster. One of those days is a grade-level department, so the entire grade-level math department will meet that day, for example. And then the other one is that PD time, where Emily Moore, our digital learning coach, she really is the person who's responsible for that time most of, of the schedule, she may have something that she's going to present during that time. When, during that collaborative time, our kids are at their exploratories, so the kids have five exploratories each. So they're at exploratory while the teachers are at the collaborative time. So that's how we've, we're able to design that schedule. What it doesn't provide is the same level of collaborative time for the exploratory teachers, so that's what we're trying to be able to adjust next year and hopefully do it within the same structure of our schedule, because it works so well in terms of providing that time. So we're hoping to be able to do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a total of 10 minutes before we can start, so if that doesn't break.
Yep, we'll take 10, we'll take 10 minutes.
Continue on the agenda. I'd like to go over to our panel members.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to introduce, introduce you to our best and brightest. I would like to introduce from Mrs. Goldworthy and Ms. Broton's co-teaching class, second grade, Molly Lambert. Molly is eight years old, and her favorite food is pasta. Molly, I like pasta myself. I take pizza dough first, but then pasta. Molly is an amazing big sister and her passion is dance. She is also on the company dance team at her dance studio. That's terrific. What kind of dance do you love? That's excellent, excellent, very good. And Molly is also a wonderful student and a terrific citizen. Thank you for being here tonight, Molly. I would also like to introduce Brayden Murray. Brayden, come on up. Brayden is in grade four, whose favorite subject is math. His interest, athletic football. He loves to eat hamburgers, and if possible, will follow that up with almost any type of dessert. Is that right? See, the only difference between you and me, Brayden, is I don't eat the hamburger, I go right to the dessert. Fun fact is that Brayden lives three houses away from school committee member Jared Hockman. That's not your fault.
I remember when they were born, when they came home from hospital.
Welkin and Jayden is also a wonderful student and a terrific citizen. Welcome. Very nice to have you guys here. So Brayden and Molly, if you would face the flag along with our chair this evening, Mr. Olympio, and at any time that you're ready, lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance, please.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. I would also like to thank Ms. Metropolis, the Brown School Principal, for being here to support the kids, and of course, the parents of both students. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to approve votes?
Yes.
President.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3787, in the amount of $43,794.86, subject to audit.
Second.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3788, in the amount of $658,485.39, subject to audit.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve votes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I just would like to announce that the next scheduled Higgins School Building Committee meeting will be Thursday, May 17. It will be at City Hall at 3:45. That's a Thursday. And of course, that's open to the public. There is some work that has already taken place on the grounds. If folks notice, we've conducted a seeding of the field. So we have signs posted asking people to stay off the fields because of the seeding in progress, and the irrigation is all working as well, so we'll see some very nice changes out there in a matter of a couple of weeks.
Can I bring this in? Anything else? That said, public participation, is there anybody in the audience that would like to hand up to the audience and say a few words? If that's good, it moves to the superintendent, please. I'll hand it over to you.
We're getting excited, right? I would, I would ask for a motion to approve the calendar for the next school year, 2018-2019. I would ask that the motion includes pending budget discussion. As we enter into budget discussions, there may be a recommendation to change the calendar the way it's drafted. I would like the public to know that any change in the calendar will not impact student aid. So I would ask that the calendar be adopted pending budget discussion.
Motion, motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent. Second.
On the motion? You want to call those, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you. The only other things under superintendent's report are items of interest. You have a brochure with important dates from the high school, a listing of the musical and variety and talent shows at the elementary schools, a listing of the science fairs at the elementary schools. We have begun, we were at the Burke one today, and you'll see that they are spaced out between this week and next week. If you can make it, it's great. You get a chance to actually talk to the students who have developed these wonderful projects, and it's a wonderful experience. I will turn this over to Jared, if you have any questions on the monthly expenditure report, and a letter that I wrote to Senator Lovely and State Representatives Speliotis and Walsh regarding circuit breaker funding. The last bit of information for you on the superintendent's report does not appear. However, we are about to start the business manager search. And as we did the last time, I think the last process was a good one. It did give us a wonderful business manager who is unfortunately leaving us, but we have been proud to have him work with us for the past two years. As we begin that search, I would recommend that at least one, if not two or three, school committee members be part of that search, as it is your appointment, so that we will be recommending, the search committee will be recommending to the full school committee for interview in public session, at least two, if not three candidates. We would ask through the chair, I would ask the finance chair, the subcommittee on finance, to discuss this and ask that at least one or two of members of her committee be appointed to the search committee. We are trying to get this done, March 8, not March 8, May 8. That would be.
For the school committee meeting, is that right?
Yeah. So we're, we're trying to get this done on May 8, at 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, at 6 o'clock, or three interviews of business manager applicants. And I will turn that over to the chair to.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. I'd be happy to discuss with the finance committee if they're interested in conducting any part of that search. I believe you were on it before, both of you? Or just?
John is, Mr. Olympia was.
Would you be happy to do that again, Mr. Olympia? There you go.
Yes, I do. I have no excuses.
I just volunteered him, too. Yeah, you do.
You, you pointed to him, so I said, yeah.
I did okay the first time, so.
You did very well.
With that, the superintendent's report is complete.
My apologies, we're having to report that PBID came over and was not considered my project. We go to written communication. We have a number of written communications. Open up for receipt of these communications, the letters from BF2 Local 1289 regarding the first port support.
Motion received.
Thank you, Deb. I think this is done. Third motion received, seconded by Mr. Rico. All in favor? To vote, next, written communication, letter from BF2 Local 1289 regarding safety for first port support.
Motion received.
Second.
Third motion by Mr. Don, seconded by Mr. Rico. All in favor? Thank you. And next is a number of communications from the Mass Association of School Committees, booklet of nominations, legal alert, regarding superintendent evaluation of the legislative vote.
Motion received.
Second.
Okay, third motion received. Mr. Don, seconded by Mr. Rico. All in favor? And now, subcommittee reports. What was to happen with the number two for education, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The education subcommittee met last night. We had a meeting where Ms. Murtagh provided us with an update on the cursive writing and reading program that we're hoping to integrate into some grade levels here in PBID. And we also had a beginning, initial conversation regarding genocide studies and inclusion of those in the middle school curriculum. It's something that we're going to continue to work on. There's a fellow from the, from Salem State University who I've been in communication with, who's going to meet with us and provide us some assistance with, including Mr. Busey and some staff members here at the middle school.
Finance Subcommittee?
Thank you. The finance subcommittee met tonight with the AFSMI union, and I'm happy to report, out of the six unions that we're currently negotiating with, we do have a tentative agreement with them. And so we will be forthcoming with the paperwork and everything that you need to see to review that. But it was very productive, and we are extremely pleased.
School safety?
Yes, sir. I've scheduled, well, I will be posting a meeting for May 22nd, that's Tuesday, 6 o'clock. They'll be right before our regular school committee meeting, and, yeah.
I have other things to mention?
Nothing to report.
While the experience is starting?
Nothing at this time.
City Council and advisory boards, Mr. Don?
Actually, two things to report. Last night, the parent advisory board met, and unfortunately, because of the change in, in the dates, the attendance was low. But we did have discussion, and we spoke, we had, it actually was a really interesting discussion, a lot about demographics and the changing face of PBID, and how people are moving here and wanting to stay. It was, it was a very enjoyable discussion, as well as a question that came up, the PTOs are still interested in information about the insurance requirement. So I'm going to send an email to you, Dr. Levine. They want to try to clarify what the requirement is, and looking at the timing, it affects their budgets negatively at a really crucial time. So the next meeting will be the third Monday of May, and it'll be at 7:00 p.m. here.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Over to you, Mr. Don. Thank you. Through the chair of the committee, I'd like to schedule a meeting on May 22nd, either before Mr. Olympia's safety meeting or after. So it'll either be at 5:30 or 6:30, so if everyone could just check their schedules, and we'll report out on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rico. Special education parent advisory board, Mr. Don?
I'll be posting a meeting real soon. Thanks.
Any more business before we address the highlights?
If I may, I just wanted to state again, I did at the last meeting, the PBID Education Foundation is having Legacy Award presentations and dinner at City Hall on May 17. Tickets are available online at their website, or I'm sure you can purchase them through City Hall.
Great, thank you. As everyone mentioned as well, I'll add a couple of events coming up that I wanted to invite you to attend. Just, I mentioned the genocide centers that we're working on the first floor. We have the Armenian genocide ceremony Thursday morning, this Thursday morning, at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall, the Division of Defense, and having the ceremony of the best people. It's a wonderful event. We have to have students from the middle school and from the history coming to that as well. And then we have our private feedback cleanup that I wanted to start notifying people of. It is not this coming Saturday, the following Saturday, May 5th, at 9:00 a.m. We're going to meet at City Hall, and then spread across the city. We have pizza coming at 11:30, and it is going to be a big crowd after winter, and not a great start for the spring. We have a lot of food after the pandemic, so. Any other announcements, anything anybody wants to mention?
Good meeting, that was a quick meeting.
You'll take them in a while.
Next agenda, I go to the next thing that we can do regularly, of course. Thank you, everyone for the meeting. Mark, that was a quick meeting, Mark.